The regular meeting of Florida City Councils, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at times seven P M. You will please stand with me for the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's invocation by Councilmember Jones.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, I thank you for the freedom that we have to come and gather and be a part of our decisions we make as the citizens of Palotes. And Lord, I thank you tonight for Tabby, our faithful financial person for many, many years for the city of Palotes. And it is bittersweet, but we are excited for her and her new season of retirement. We think are thankful for her and all our years of hard work. So we pray for clarity of thought and all the decisions that we are making tonight, whether they're minor administrative issues or major decisions that impact the future of Palotes. I ask that you would grant the members of the council wisdom, clarity of thought, and unity in our decision making. We pray this in your name. Amen.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, I would like to call Tabby Dirk. Come on up here. For those of you that don't know, Tabby has been our senior financial head of all things money-related, financial director. She has been with the city in one form or fashion for twenty-two years. Tabby came to us and was actually working with contract and then fulfilled the wife-wide rules and was full-time for the past twelve years. And has just recently decided that this was the time to be able to enjoy the rest of her year with her husband and the rest of the family and enjoy life, which we all work hard and save, but we also have to smell the roses along the way. So we appreciate all the year's service. I'd like to point out that this year I caps out her career with third time in a row that under her leadership in finances, we have received the G F O A award of for our auditing, the highest award for financial, how would we say that? The, she passed the audit with the highest level and just just a tremendous job in keeping all our records, passing all audit measures and just surpassing every measure of excellence. For the third year in a row, third year in a row, we received that high honor and appreciate all the good work on behalf of the city. For our appreciation, Saddam Rangel, I appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you.
But stood up because, no, I want this one. Thank you, Tabby. Excellent. All right. Well, we do appreciate all of our employees. And it's wonderful to see that we've had and still have and continue to have people that have been with us and are measured in decades, not just years and months. And that's a sign of a happy and healthy staff here in the city of Palotes. At this point, we're going to move on to item number three, which is the public hearing to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on a land use request by M and N O Investment Group. This will be a planned unit development establishing trailheads at Palotes, a proposed mixed-use commercial and residential project on property zone, general business district B three, generally located at fourteen, four, ten, Bandera Road, Palotes, Texas, seven, eight, zero, two, three, and identified as per cad property ID numbers twenty-four, twenty-one, zero, zero, and one, zero, nine, seven, two, five, five, and two, four, two, one, three, zero. We have people signed up, which I will call forward to be able to speak your mind on this item. We are limiting people to three minutes per comment. Please, when you come up to the podium, when you're called, state your name and your address, and you can speak on on the item. I would request, we do have quite a few people here. Please respect the speaker, regardless of what their point of view is, if they're for or against, we want to make sure that we maintain a high-level decorum that represents the high standard of living we set for ourselves here in Palotes and respect our neighbors regardless of their opinions. At this time.
Mr. Mayor, if you could just officially.
Oh, it's time. I'm sorry. Yep, official time here. Thank you very much. We are now opening this public hearing at seven oh six P M. And we'll start Carl Winkie, Jr.
Always make me go first. It's an honor.
He was the first one turned in.
Okay, well, I'm here to show my support for the project. I've I previously spoke.
Name and address, if you don't mind, please.
Apologies, Carl Wonky, Jr., one, eight, five, nine, one, Bandera Road. I previously spoke on in support of M and O. We are working with them on another project and it's been over a year now, a year and a half, and I can, I once again wanted to say that these are good guys. They're here to listen. They're here to modify the project as needed to appease as many people as they can. You know, I grew up here, went to high school here, and so for me, it's kind of like we're being that I work here and that I've come here. It's I want the best for Palotes as well, and I know that if it's not this, it's going to be something else. And so I asked myself like, what would I like to see? And having the opportunity to have these nice apartments, I've looked at the renderings, I've looked at the plans they've sent out. It's good quality materials they're putting on the exterior for sods. This isn't like the run-of-the-mill. They're not cheaping out in any way. It's a good quality product. And I noticed like they've been really like working hard to get this to fit what you guys are looking for. We've been helping where we can with pricing and while we have an interest in trying to do this job, even if we don't get it, we're not selected for whatever reason. I'd still be happy to have this across the street from me and places to go visit beyond just El Chap and everything we got here. It's great. But I'd like something new, you know, I'd like, I'd like a place for our fifty-eight employees and their friends and stuff to go do during the day or go a different place to go for lunch. We do a lot of company events out here and it's, you know, it's nice to like spend time out here and I'd like to have other opportunities and other places to go. I know they would appreciate having a place that's affordable that they could stay at. And so, you know, I just want to like kind of make my point that there's a lot of people in Palotes. It could be a lot of things there. I don't want to see another gas station. We got four now. Like, let's do something new. Let's have some nice apartments. Let's have some nice amenities. I know pickleball is not for everybody, but some people like it, right? There should be something for everyone out here, not just keep it the same old way that it used to be. It's it's good to have change sometimes. So I throw my support behind these guys. I throw my support behind this project. I hope that if anyone's opposed to it, I know there's quite a bit here. You know, it's constructive criticism. We may not like it, but what what do you want to see? Tell these guys that that's better to get what you're wanting in a way than something you don't want at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sabrina McGowan.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina McGowan. I live at one, zero, nine, zero, two, R X Trail, directly above the proposed P U D. There's nothing beneficial in this P U D application, and I strongly oppose it. The P U D is mostly high-density rental units that will lead to increased traffic and congestion, pedestrian accidents, crime, noise, decreased property values, trespassing and strain on our first responders and schools. My concerns are shared by hundreds of other Palotes residents, two hundred and fifty-seven who have signed a petition to express their opposition to this project, along with dozens of residents who have expressed their opposition writing to and by speaking before our planning and zoning commission and you. My concerns were also shared by the planning and voting, sorry, planning and zoning commissioners who voted not to recommend this application to you. I understand that in order to live in Palotes, affordability can be an issue in some communities that compromise spending rental units. But we are already surrounded by six rental communities with one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight rental units built and under construction within four miles of Old Town Palotes. There is no shortage of rental units for people outside of Palotes who are either unable to afford a home in our community, recently graduated college, or want to live and work here. There is much less commercial property available in Palotes since these twenty-one point seven acres were zoned B three in nineteen eighty-two. An additional sit-down dining restaurants, specialty shops, entertainment venues, and a variety of professional services are becoming more necessary to fulfill the growing needs of our residents. So this property should remain zoned for commercial development to ensure our community has the best opportunity to bring in services and businesses that add value and convenience for our residents. Fifteen acres for rental units don't benefit us. I'm asking that you not approve this P U D application. We know that Palotes is special because of its unique history, charm, and beauty, and those are qualities that will never exist in a high-density rental development. The P U D will only enrich M and O partners and cost Palotes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Debbie Horn.
Hi there. Debbie Horn, nine, seven, two, five, Tower View Road, Palotes. I'm here to voice my support for the project. In the November public portion of the planning and zoning meeting, the meeting, or I'm sorry, the changes to the plan that had already been made were never discussed. The applicant showed he had changed the plan after criticisms were received from the prior meeting. The fact that the plan was significantly changed was not clearly stated by anyone at the November meeting. Once the applicant had a chance to speak, most of the criticisms raised were no longer valid. Everyone keeps referring to this as an apartment complex, and they're referring to it as townhomes. In my experience, no one likes development in their backyard. I've watched tract homes be developed and work their way up the valley that I see from my home. A friend of mine in Palotes sees the lights from the judicial services building as his nighttime view. We now have a gas station at the corner of Scenic Loop with no trees. I believe that the group against this project would be even more vocal if they were looking down on flat roofs, a big box store with A C units on the roofs, maybe compressors, maybe fast food. This project under consideration is textbook in what most people would like to see in their community. All businesses in Palotes need more customers, and this project would certainly help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Horn. Patrick McGowan.
Evening. I'm Patrick McGowan. I'm a resident, one, oh, nine, oh, two, Bar X Trail in Los Park Estates, and I'm here to speak in strong opposition to this development. What I like to do today is clear up some miscommunications, misinformation that was provided to the P and Z Commission. Multiple times during that meeting, David Moore and stated that the density of ten units per acre was the representative of this property. Residential density is the calculation of the number of units divided by the residential area. This is twenty-seven, twenty-one point seven acres of land, fifteen point one acres has been designated as residential. The residential density of this property is two hundred and twenty units divided by fifteen point one. That equals fourteen point five units per acre. Unlike the ten units per acre that he was stating in the P and Z. If you approve this, this will be forty times, forty-five times larger than any density of any P U D you've ever approved. A good example is Bandera Ranch. Bandera Ranch is thirty-one point five acres, twenty-three acres is identified as residential. They have two hundred and thirty units. They have a residential density of ten. They did not take the almost nine mil, nine acres of commercial property, roll that into their calculations and claim seven point three units per acre, which they didn't because that would be a lie. So when David stands up here and states the ten units per acre, I hope that you challenge them how two hundred and twenty divided by fifteen point one is anything other than fourteen point five units per acre. But putting that aside, one thing I would like to talk about is the zoning of this property. So David Moore in an internet or LinkedIn post several months ago stated that zoning is insane, anti-American concept, creates an environment of segregation, and anticipate anticipate users that we do not have the intelligence and capability to effectively anticipate. I strongly agree with that. I think we do have the intelligence to decide what goes on that property. The city council has voted and approved this as is commercial property. The city has invested almost ten million dollars putting utilities out to that property for commercial purposes. The P and Z, as a couple of weeks ago, has reaffirmed the property should remain commercial and not be submitted as a P U D. And the taxpayers and residents of this this community have asked you multiple times through multiple sources to keep this as commercial. So for somebody from New Braunfels to come into Lotus and say that we don't have the intelligence or capability to effectively anticipate, and and that we need two hundred and twenty rental units instead is is just ridiculous. So I really respect everything you guys are going through. I know this is tough. But I do hope that you, you know, support the decisions you've already made to make this commercial. You honor the investments that we've made to bring those utilities out and you answer, you listen to the people and and deny this request. Thank you.
Mr. Roy Horn.
Hi, Roy Horn, nine, seven, two, five, Tower View Road. Let me correct again. This is not an apartment project. It was changed between the time of the first hearing and the second. And as Debbie said, that was never made clear before the vote last time. In that last meeting, one of the commission members brought up the total rental income couldn't work out. Somebody didn't understand that you could have less units, make them a higher-class project, and they would be the same amount of money. So that that didn't come across for anybody. I've heard opposition because of blasting rock. That could be handled in a building permit project. I heard it would ring additional crime, which I don't quite get that. I believe many of the positives about the plan were overlooked by looking at some details like a splash pad or pickleball court. I am an expert witness, commercial real estate broker since nineteen eighty, Palotes Creek Ranch resident, former economic development committee member, former chairman of the theme city committee under Verbiant Hulse. I've worked to save the tree, the trees, Frost Bank, Dairy Queen, Kiner Dentistry. Everything I've done has been quality, and I'm not associated with David and his company. But I have looked at the plan and I've looked at the plan that got changed. And I think the plan that got changed is not being looked at when we're talking here. I greatly respect my neighbors and friends overlooking this area from above, but there's a risk that comes from their actions, and it's the unintended consequence. In all my years before commissions and city government, I've never seen a community ask for more commercial development as the case is here instead of attractive residential. What I have seen it when there's there's an attractive quality development, the two sides would agree to work together to mitigate issues that affect an adjacent neighborhood. Those things can be like changing lighting to be directed downward as in a dark sky standard, noise mitigation, screening off C P S boxes. If this development does not happen, the voices, the opposition, won't mean much to a city council in the future that's granting development permits for eighteen-plus acres of all commercial buildings that really would affect them. Fast food, drive-throughs, banks, car dealer, bar if permitted. I really think this is about, we don't want anything to be built there, and I understand that. We watch things come closer to our house. We drive by the new Q T on the way home. But this is a good-looking project. For hundreds of feet above it, they're looking over it. They already see Manders Automotive. They see Young Runners. This project is a good-looking project, and I think it's one that needs to be there. And I think they're missing the unintended consequence is that when they have all commercial, it won't be quite what they wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Charles Roberts.
Hey, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Charles Roberts. I live at one, oh, nine, oh, six, Bar X Trail. I own two other properties in the city. I've spoken at several of the previous meetings, planning and zoning and city council. I'm I'm in opposition to the L M and O proposition to change the zoning of the property. I guess that I would bring to your attention that, you know, the citizens, we we've been getting up at every one of these meetings, and we're really coming out for this. It's a, it's an important topic, and we have all lived here, many of us for many years, myself for two decades already with my family and raising kids here. It's a great city. We want it to develop to be even a better city in the future. We have voiced our concern, myself specifically and my wife, Laura, we voiced our concern that we are in opposition and that we bought our property. I live within forty feet of this property, so I live on one, oh, nine, oh, six, right above. The the development is, you know, it's it's pushing some commercial, which is already zoned. And we, as purchasers of the property years ago, we understood that zoning and we accepted that. That was the risk we took. We're happy to accept it still. The the proposition now is to change the zoning so that we can put in two hundred apartment dwellers or more. I guess two per apartment, maybe four hundred plus. Previous to that, it was three hundred, three hundred and fifty. Each time we meet, they change their plan and tell us a different story, and we don't know exactly what we're up against. And we don't know what they're going to bring to you after it's approved. I mean, I I'm sure there's going to be, we have to change this, we have to change that. So again, I'm perfectly happy with the original zoning. But I would also challenge the current property owner to to consider that if this is denied tonight as planning and zoning is asked you to do, if it's denied tonight, I ask the property owner today to think about asking for rezoning herself or himself. And let's rezone it and make it another part of Old Town, and let's make a pathway under the Palotes Creek Bridge that adjoins the two properties, and we create a wonderful retail commercial space for the entire community, the entire county. But we don't have that vision right now, and we feel like we're being pressed and pushed because we have to make a decision that we don't have to make a decision at all. We can deny this, and we can take some time and think about what we want to make our community into, and let's do it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Pack.
Mayor, Council, thanks for letting us talk. My name is Lisa Pack, and I live at one, five, seven, six, zero, Scenic Loop Road. I'm the north, very north end of Palotes, but I pass by the proposed development property almost every day. I'm in opposition of this, not because I'm in opposition of development, but because there really has not been the transparency of what exactly is going to go in there with the detail that most of us want to know. The density is a huge issue. Look at the traffic right now. It takes an hour sometimes to get through the construction mess. It's not going to get better if we put in a high-density apartment complex, even townhomes. There are other options. If your planning and zoning committee is not recommending this, y'all need to ask why, and it needs to be clear what the issues are. And most of them have to do with the pressure on the infrastructure that San Antonio will have to face if this development goes through or any development this does. They have other options. The owner has other options. There are lots of things that could be put in there and developed in a way that would contribute to the unique character of Lotus, not turn it into a suburb, a nighttime suburb of San Antonio. We would like to keep our historic flavor and our unique beauty of the area. This is not necessarily destroying that, but it is taking a piece of property that could be used for a multitude of other things off of the market and putting it into housing, which may or may not last the test of time. We know rental units eventually deteriorate and cause problems. That is historic. It's not going to change. I hope that the council would look at the issues that the planning and zoning committee had a problem with. The proposed developers be more clear about exactly what it is we're going to get if they want to move forward. And we get clarity on what it's going to look like and how much better it could be if there's some thought put into it instead of this pressure to make money for people other than the residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I believe this is Amy, Amy Bezzo. Okay. Miss Amy. I wasn't sure if that was an S or another.
I'm sorry for my terrible handwriting. Good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Burrell. I live at one, zero, 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 six, Lazy J Trail, right across the street. My view is not directly affected by this, but I will be affected by this as everybody sitting here tonight will be. It's really nice to see so many familiar faces, albeit under really unfortunate circumstances. We seem to be on wash, rinse, repeat here. I'm here really to ask our council to hear and represent the voices of the citizenry of Palotes. We overwhelmingly have made it clear, there are some exceptions, but we have been very clear that we do not welcome or condone this project in any iteration. A wolf in sheep's clothing is still a wolf. I would like to point to those crocodile tears that I heard once before about, oh, this is just not a feasible project if we can't build over three hundred units. I think that really illustrates the duplicity of these planners. People take pride in being Palatians. This is an aspirational community. We should take pride in this. There are a multitude of motivations for moving out here. But there is one that's almost universal, a desire to step away from the plagues of big city life, a desire for tranquility and community, virtues that are obviously imperiled. I want to say that a lot of people in our city do not know about the stuff going on. It's unfortunate. I have had a lot of interactions online as well as in person at the market days. People just, they do not know. They don't realize that this is going to be a rental community, the ones that, you know, voice their support. Oh, sure, that sounds good. They don't realize what it is. They think, oh, some retail, fantastic. They don't know what this is. It's really unfortunate. Almost down to a man, the people that I spoke to at Marketplace said, oh, is that the one going in across from the Q T? And I said, no, it's not. It's another one, in fact. And they all went, oh, no, not another one. Those are the citizens of the city. That is the overwhelming sentiment of the citizens of the city. A vote for M and O's project is a vote against the current citizenry of Palotes. Those are the people that voted you in to serve us and represent you and represent us. Thank you so much for doing the right thing.
Thank you very much. Nick Colonel. Nick. Andrea Frer.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Frer. I live at one, five, six, six, one, Chincapan in Palotes. I am very, very strongly opposed to this project, and so is my husband. I am very, very strongly opposed to this project, and so is my husband. No, I hear people saying, no, no, it's not an apartment complex. It is, you know, rentals. Well, that's the problem. It's rentals. It may be if it was townhomes to be purchased, that would be a different thing. Rentals bring problems to areas. They all, as it's been mentioned, they all eventually deteriorate. They, you do not have to invest really anything to rent, maybe a month or two of, you know, payment for rent. But you do not, those people are transient. They may come and live for maybe a year, but they can get out of their lease if they want to. They don't care about what's around them. They, they don't take care of a property. And, you know, it doesn't matter sometimes who gets the lease. We don't know what their lease structure is gonna be, and oftentimes apartment complexes or rentals, they change management. And as they change management, then also sometimes the leasing structure changes. And not every management company is as strict about who they allow to rent or not. And are they going to allow people to sublet? And then you get a variety of people in there that do not care about Hal Lotus. They do not care about what is around them. Also, you know, I don't understand why it's said, oh, we should, you know, accept this, because if it's not this, it'll be big chain stores or what? Why does it have to? Why do we have to settle on this project? And, you know, because we're worried about the chains. Well, don't allow the chain companies to go in there. I agree with the other gentleman that said it should be like an extension of Old Town. When you look up information about Hal Lotus, you you will read like, it'd be nice, it was like Bernie, but it's not. They're allowing all these strip malls and stuff to come into the area. Why can we not stop this? You know, I see it as the gateway to the hill country. No one comes here because they want a gateway to San Antonio, just more strip malls and more, sorry, garbage. You know, make it unique. Nothing about rental properties will draw people to the community.
Thank, thank you for your comments. We have to limit to three minutes. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh Ms. Gina Joyce?
Hi, thank you. My name is Gina Joyce. I live at fourteen one oh seven Circle A Trail in Hal Lotus Park Estates. I come here to speak out against this proposed development. We let this Hal Lotus, the property in question, is a beautiful property, and it can become such a great enhancement to our, to our community. And a large rental community is not gonna be a great enhancement to our community. So please do not change the zoning variance and allow this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Ed Joyce?
Hello, everyone. Uh my name's Ed Joyce. I live at fourteen one oh seven Circle A Trail uh here in Hal Lotus. Uh before I express myself, I wanna express myself to you folks about uh thanking you for your commitment to the city of Lotus. As I spoke with the mayor at a point in time, I know that none of you are getting paid, and that tells me that you're here for the love of the city and the best interest of this community. And I think that speaks a lot regardless of where you agree or disagree and as well as for all the people here in the room. So I I thank you all for that. Onto the the matter at hand here. I am uh gonna voice my uh opinion that I am against changing the the zoning variance uh in favor of this. I I don't believe that we know enough about this, uh about the impacts that that are gonna occur with Banderia Ranch that's going in just a quarter mile up the street uh to make a uh an impact assessment of what those impacts will be on the community before we take on a a another larger uh development such as this. So I I again, just to express uh that I'm against changing the zoning variance and ask that you follow the record of the vote from the zoning committee. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Richard and Samantha?
Hello, I'm uh Richard. This is my wife Samantha Cunha. We reside at one zero eight two six Bar X Trail. And we're both here today to uh inform you that we are strongly opposed against MNO development. Uh we feel that the development will just result in another high-density complex, um similar to the one that's going up on Banderia Road and Scenic Scenic Loop Road. Uh if you combine these two projects, that's a total of four hundred and fifty units with multiple residents residing in each of them. Uh you know, we we grew up in apartments, you know, during during our younger years, and, you know, it wasn't just two people in one, one bedroom, you know, we had four, six, eight, eight people sometimes, so. And we feel that that can really detract from, you know, from what Hal Lotus is all about. So also, this is not only gonna require more resources, but it's gonna result in traffic congestion, uh crime, trespassing, increase in lighting. So we feel all these are just negative things that we don't want to see here in the Lotus. So my vision for this property is a combination of high-end shops, uh restaurants and other entertainment. So we can attract people from around other parts of the city, maybe even from, you know, Banderia coming into town. So today, we have to drive to Bernie, Lock and Terra, other parts of the city to get this experience. So why can't we have it in our own backyard? So in closing, I urge the city of Hal Lotus leadership to really use some of the money in your budget to explore some of the options. Think outside the box. Let's uh, you know, not just have another high-density complex in place, but let's maintain the, you know, the charm of Old Town Hal Lotus and 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 flip to uh other options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Carl Wonkey Senior?
Carl Wonkey, uh live at one, or have a business at one eight five nine one Banderia Road, Lotus, Texas. I'm here in support of the proposed apartment development. As stated in prior meetings, I have lived in Hal Lotus. I still live in Hal Lotus and surrounding areas for fifty-plus years. I attended Hal Lotus Elementary, Cook Stevenson, John Marshall High School, and I moved my business here seven years ago. Uh Hal Lotus needs more housing development opportunities. While there are high-income units, they are still more affordable than the home purchase. Additionally, the retail tax base currently exceeds the bedroom tax by a reasonable percentage. This is relevant as many of the homeowners in the area are approaching the age cap as well on the tax. An apartment community is never capped based on age and continually increases in value due to the competition related in the market and the need for capital improvements on the asset. During the last zoning meeting, it was noted that there are several vacant retail spaces currently in Hal Lotus. This is due in part to a lack of bedrooms to support the retail needs. Additionally, several businesses can't secure their workforce to operate due to a lack of affordable housing. A majority of the workforce are part-time students who at best can only work a few hours each day. Several businesses in the community, retail market would benefit for the mixed-use development as well. Not too long ago, B. Daddies and a few other establishments had posted on Nextdoor that they were in need of increased traffic for their business. Many mentioned the need for large sit-down establishments and improved dining in Hal Lotus. The reality is, without the bedrooms to support those investments, they may never materialize. This is why we continue to see only fast food businesses. Individuals like to toss out concerns about higher traffic or crime, when in fact, the traffic has steadily increased for years as developments continue to grow just outside city limits. As crime, there is weekly reports of mail theft, vehicle vandalism, home theft of items from garages in the communities around the development now posted on Nextdoor weekly. It's not from the apartments. It's due to higher incomes in our area that attract the crime. Even Scenic Loop is not immune to the recent crime issues as reported just last week. During the zoning meeting, it was mentioned that we need to attract retail like the Conterra and the Rim. And it was just recently mentioned in this meeting. It should be noted that both these developments have several apartment complexes in and near those developments. At the zoning meeting, Alex Blue stated, the development is needed for the bedroom tax. I just don't know if this is the right location. Hal Lotus is the center of North North Side School District. All the land of the Northwest and Northeast is still to be developed in the future. Growth is gonna continue, and this is an opportunity to balance the bedroom tax and the housing opportunity at Pearl Lotus before it skips past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And finally, Ms. Mifeymore?
Thank you for hearing me. I'm gonna set my timer so I don't, I'm just back from a seven-hour drive down to McAllen. My kid's in a ballet, so I'm sort of wiped out. I'll do the best I can.
Name and address first.
Amazing day.
Just your, your name and address for uh?
I'm so sorry. Mifeymore, um I live in San Antonio, but I've been uh out here in Hal Lotus for my entire seventy-eight-year life. We are a fifth-generation ranching right up the highway five miles from here. I used to live at one oh five one eight Bar X Trail, so I'm very familiar with the area. We had six or seven emails that were sent to you guys in support of our, of this, of this development. I'm gonna read the letter that we wrote to the city so people can see what we said. I wanted to write this letter as an expression of my support for the development called Trailhead at Hal Lotus. I have owned this property since two thousand and eight, and I've had reluctance to sell it for development purposes. I've been very clear in my intent to preserve the natural landscape and the small-town feel of the city of Hal Lotus that my family has been a part of for five generations. I've been very clear in my intent to retain the front forty feet deep of the entire property across the the highway frontage that I am, of the property that I'm selling to MNO. I'm keeping the forty-foot green belt, green belt in my ownership as the only way to protect it, the trees and the grass and the greenness of it. It will be saved in perpetuity as a greenscape. This decision to protect the greenscape was worth it for me in order to preserve the trees and maintain the charm of Hal Lotus. I have been presented with many offers over the past few years to purchase my land. All of the previous potential developers refused to respect my desire to preserve the trees and to agree for me to keep the front forty feet. So we lost those sales. We did not take, accept those those offers. The team at MNO Investments is the only group that has had the sophistication to make the economics work in this inflated economy, as well as the desire to preserve the trees and provide a quality development project that I feel is good to bestow on the city of Hal Lotus. I want to go through the points of opposition a little bit and discuss how the project at Banderia Ranch, previously the Bayless Miller tract, has already received its PUD approval from the city of Hal Lotus for a much less environmentally and citizen-friendly project. We were told by attendees that none of the citizens that are opposed to this project spoke in opposition to the Banderia Ranch Bayless Miller property. Many complaints, you've already heard them. I won't say them again. I've heard that uh the leader of the group said that they would prefer a Walmart to the development that we have, we're trying to get going. The Bayless Miller property is also rentals, and I won't go through the complaints that we sent to the city, but again, I want to reiterate that we were told that none of the residents that spoke up in opposition to the Bayless Miller project or the QT gas station that chopped down all those trees. The neighborhood opposing the Trailhead project lives on a cliff.
We we hit our three-minute, you hit your three-minute limit there, but we do recognize what you're saying and you're voicing your opinion for the project. Uh and we did get your letter, and thank you for reading that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I had my timer on here, and yes, you're right. We're at four minutes already. Thank you for your time.
Okay, uh that will close our public hearing. I encourage everybody to hang out till we get to item number eight, where this is on the agenda and council will be able to speak to items. We cannot speak to these items in a public hearing. At this point, the public hearing will be closed at seven forty-four PM. This point, we'll move to citizens to be heard. Again, in similar fashion, uh those that have signed up will be able to come and speak their mind on any issue whatsoever. Uh in starting off, and our citizens to be heard, we will have Ms. Nancy Smith. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nancy Smith. I live at one one seven four five Sunset Ranch in the Hal Lotus ETJ. This is concerning your no um through traffic going down Beverly Hills and into Davis Ranch. I know that all of you know that the Hall Penny neighborhood is not the problem. It's the Davis Ranch uh traffic. There's way too much traffic. It's going way too fast. And I know that you're really trying to find a way to um to curtail that, but it's really become a very difficult situation for those of us who live in the Hall Penny area. My neighbor Lydia is eighty-five years old, and this is just scaring her to death. Most of the people in that Hall Penny area, we're we're retired. I mean, this is just an area of just down-to-earth people who are just trying to live their lives. We live on five-to-ten-acre properties, most of us, and we have cows and horses and sheep and goats and chickens and everything else. And that's, that's the reason that I don't think Hal Lotus wanted to annex us in the, in the first place. We're a part of the ETJ. It's just that that we don't fit into inside the city, you know, the I don't, I think we'd have to give up all the livestock to do that. I'm, I'm asking you to grandfather us in. We have always used that road, the, the weights, the clients, the merits, they've all used that road for decades. It's the only way in and out of that little pocket. This was not a problem until the Davis Ranch development. And I'll tell you where the real problem is. It's Bear County. Bear County, it's not the people who bought land, who bought homes in Davis Ranch. They're not the problem. It's Bear County. I talked to um, four years ago, I talked to someone from Polte, and they said, I asked them, please don't open that road. And they said, oh, we'll put up, we're willing to put up the gate, uh an emergency-only gate. It's Bear County that's insisting on doing it. Bear County has lied to us every step of the way. Bear, we have a little road that's twenty-four feet wide, and it's less than a mile long. And Bear County told us that it would cost one million, six hundred thousand dollars to to pave that road. When we were trying to privatize, they told us that we had to have that one million, six hundred thousand dollars at the top of the petition. I went to every family out there to sign it. All but two did.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Again, on that issue, I invite you to remain for item number thirteen on tonight's agenda. I am not gonna get your name right, Mr. Randall. Thank you. Thank you for your kindness. I'm there. Uh and welcome to city council meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Uh my name is Randy Shiblehood. I live at one one seven five five Sunset Woods. I'm in the Hall Penny neighborhood, uh Bear County in Hal Lotus ETJ. Uh I wanted to see if I could get a rate, a hand raise from all the people here from Hall Penny. It's a very reclusive bunch back there, so them showing up tonight is kind of a statement in itself. Again, uh we, I'm here because of the no pass-through in um Beverly Hills. We kind of got caught up as collateral damage, and people are now receiving tickets for driving through there when we've been going through there for fifty-some years without, you know, any problems or complaints from Beverly Hills. One of the things that is important is we're in the same school district as Beverly Hills. There are a lot of kids back on uh Sunset Pass, and to get to Hal Lotus Elementary, they now have to go drive out all the way to Gollum. they now have to go drive out all the way to Gollum Road and go around. I don't think that's something that was considered when this ordinance was enacted. In addition, same thing with with O'Connor High School there in O'Connor, O'Connor High School. So they have to drive all the way around, whereas Beverly Hills, if you live in Beverly Hills, you can just go out to fifteen sixty. I don't think that the the street that they connected to Sunset Hills was actually designed for egress for for all of our residents there. And it's just creating a hardship going out and going all the way around. So I'd like really for y'all to consider including us as an exception. You know, maybe listing the streets that we live on or because we live in the E T J of Hal Lotus, include us as an exception so we can keep continue to use Beverly Hills. I think that's about it. I don't know if anybody's going to speak after me, but all these people here showed up just in in support of trying to get an exception for us.
Thank you very much. Is that Hector Tamayo?
My name is Hector Tamayo. I live in twelve oh fifty Sunset Path. She is my sister in law.
I'm going to go ahead and translate for him. Our concern is, actually, we've got an issue and we have a concern of using Sunset Path, I mean Beverly Hills Road. We've lived in on Sunset Path for the past thirty five years, and my concern is that, as you know, it's the only street off of Sunset Woods, and it's a dirt dirt road. And we have a lot of traffic that goes through there, too. I guess they're trying to wait, find their way out, and they just turn around. There's a lot of children there, and we're all family. So my understanding is that one of our neighbors spoke to you, Mr. Whitehead, and you had said that there was not going to be an issue for us that live in that area. So that's basically.
Can I put stickers on the trucks or something?
I mean.
For the police?
Because we've been we've been getting, everybody that lives on this on the on Sunset Path is we're all relatives. So we've all been getting warnings. And like I said, we've lived there for the past thirty five years, and we've never had an issue until the new subdivision opened up. That's that's our concern.
Thank you. And and again, there seems to be quite a few people here for the Beverly Hills. I encourage everybody, we cannot speak to these issues in this in the citizens to be heard. But I did hear that there were concerns that we come today, and so we created an agenda items, item number thirteen. Please stick around where council can be free to discuss and openly talk about this issue and some specifics for you, okay?
Yeah, like I said, mainly the, like I said, the traffic that's going through there. I mean, this is this is a dirt street, and it's it's pretty hazardous for children.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And finally, Adriana Salazar? Oh, okay, okay, for both of you, both signed up. Gotcha, gotcha. All right, well, that will conclude our citizens to be heard. Moving on, looking for a motion a second to approve consent agenda items number five and six as written.
Mr. Mayor, move. We approve consent agenda items five and six as written.
Motion by Sanders, second by second by Cato. No discussion is required on a consent agenda. So all in favor of approving consent agenda items number five and six as written, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. At this point, we'll have the mayor's report. Have very interesting thing happen to us. A piece of good news to waylay our ongoing commentary with text dots traffic out there. But just recently, I was contacted. Anybody is familiar with Dennis Quaid? Dennis Quaid has a nationally produced television show, and they take on a number of issues, social issues and political issues and whatnot. But they reached out to us because they had selected us as one of ten cities that they were interviewing, had boiled down to top ten finalists for greatest place to live in America. Now, I don't believe we're going to be selected as number one, but the fact that we made the top ten list of the greatest places to live in America by nationally produced television show is quite an achievement, and I I attribute that to fantastic citizens, number one. And as demonstrated, we have a large group of people with a variety of perspectives, but they can come together here. I would disagree with something said that was earlier, unfortunate circumstances here. This is exactly what our forefathers had in mind, where our citizens get together, have the varied perspectives, come together and respectfully debate the issues and come to right decisions and move forward as a community. And the fact that we do that is evident in our daily life and our businesses and our social interactions and our events and our community events, and it's landed us on the map of a place that people want to be. So thank you to the citizens. Thank you to our employees that make this city a great and safe place. Our public safety workers, our tremendous staff here, our businesses, our residents, a hand to everybody for that. This time, we'll move on to item number eight, looking for a motion and a second to discuss and take action on item number eight as written.
Mr. Mayor, I mean that we discuss and take action on item number eight as written.
Motion by Massey, second by.
I'll second that.
Second by Sanders. Before we get started in this issue, we take point of privilege and discuss a couple of items. Number one, take everybody's comments to heart. Everybody up here does. And there are some points that are made, and some are accurate, some of them are not accurate. It's unfortunate that most of our citizens citizens aren't up to date. They're caught off guard. We are trying very hard, and we have seen an increase in citizen involvement, which we hope to see this much attendance on all of our meetings so that everybody would be aware of everything that's going on in our community, not just one item here and there that happens to hit the social media. But there are some issues at hand, property rights, for example. And I need to state this because it sets the standard for conversations about to ensue. When properties zoning is very important, I take that very importantly. Commercial areas are designed that way on purpose. Residential are designed that way on purpose so that we don't have what happens out in unincorporated Bear County as you headed up as it's known, Parkway, and you have residents everywhere, and then also in the big giant fireworks warehouse. That's because there is no zoning. That's what happens when you don't have zoning is atrocities, right? That said, when a property is zoned for whatever, B one, B two, B three residents, you the city cannot deny a business that is in that zoning designation. So could a big business, a big box in this property go? Sure. Could we stop that? No. Would one? I doubt it because it's not on an intersection. So there are things that, two things to consider. One, can something go there? Would something go there? I doubt that. Fast food certainly can and probably would because that would be a spot for it. So we have to keep in mind that there's a a large subset of items that can go there with no opposition from city. Doesn't matter what anybody thinks. And that is what brings the opportunity for council to consider a variation such as a PUD because that way we can head off certain developments that we don't for sure want to have happen. Now, that being said, I we have to take into consideration what is being proposed, but I'm just trying to give the ground rules of what is considered. We have an opportunity to choose an item, which is what was done in the first PUD because of what Plan B was. We don't operate in fear, and I don't suggest that we consider fear of what might go there. We need to make right decisions. That being said, we do need to think about traffic, excuse me, facts. If we're going to deny something, we need to deny for the right reasons, not for a stated reason that's not actually accurate. When we think about residential traffic, we I've heard a lot of comments about we should make it entirely commercial. I can appreciate that. You have to realize when you say we don't want residential because that'll bring all this traffic. There's many, 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 many more times vehicles if that all was all commercial than if it was residence. I a lot of you know, I'm a firefighter, I'm your mayor, but I was also on a multi county economic development corporation in New York State, and many studies showing that the commercial traffic is many times more heavy. In order to sustain a business, it has to have a tremendous amount of traffic in order to keep it afloat. And if you look at that property and put thirty businesses on there, you're talking thousands upon thousands of thousands of cars or else they go under. Second thing to keep in consideration, our city is not in a position where we have to make a decision. We don't have, we have good balance right now. But we all want some businesses that we don't have, date night restaurants, et cetera. The reason why those type of businesses are not interested in here is because we don't have enough residents. It's not just pass through traffic. Think about if you go out to Catula, you're not going to find a Lamborghini dealership in Catula. You barely find a Ford dealership there. Why? Because there's not enough population basis for the very, very small percentage that is interested in a Lamborghini. Similarly, it takes a large population to have enough people that want to have a four hundred dollar steak dinner to be able to have Ruth Chris show up here and and build in this community. We are in a situation right now, when I've talked with our businesses, they're hanging on, and part of it is due to traffic. I understand that. But part of it is due that we have more businesses now, and they're all fighting for the same residents. We need more residents just to support the businesses we have. So when we look at developments, say, let's do just commercial. We're asking for failure of not only those businesses, but the businesses we currently have. And this is a, this is a concept that has council has to take in consideration. If we're going to even allow any more businesses, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we need more residents in order to support the long term success of that. Affordability isn't required. It's something interesting to consider, but I don't see any affordable housing in the Dominion, for example. And so we have a one of the nicest premier communities in in all of Bear County, and we have, I have a personal interest in maintaining that. But affordability is something we have to take a look for when somebody gets into their eighties and they don't want to live in their six thousand foot house anymore, but they do want to live in Hal Lotus. Where are they going to go? These are some things that have to be considered. That said, and I'll close my remarks with this. I am very happy that the development did change drastically from three hundred units to two hundred and twenty. That said, and and did make great strides in the right direction, three stories to two stories, three hundred and thirty something to two hundred and twenty. These are a lot of things, but the density, you are correct, sir, is still nearly fifty percent more dense than the PUD that we did approve, which is already the most dense project we have in all of Hal Lotus. And I'm very cautious of that amount of that level of density on that size of property. I'm also concerned about having too much commercial, not enough residents. And so there's a balance that has to be found and for appropriate area, especially when we're looking at variances. So those are the limits of my comments. Again, this is a matter for council to vote on, and so we will turn this over to Councilmember Massey.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, before we we do discussion, we do have the applicants here, and they have a quick presentation.
Okay, fair enough. I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's the same, it's the same item.
It's the same item. Yeah.
Hi, thank you so much for your time today and your time listening to our presentation. And I appreciate the citizen comments. We've been listening to citizens throughout this process on both sides of the aisle. There are some that oppose. There are many that are in favor. So anyways, I just wanted to go over the updates to the plan. I know there was some discussion among the citizens about, you know, oh, we were unsure of what's in the new plan, what happened since the first plan was proposed, and I just wanted to kind of briefly discuss that. And then, of course, make our pitch for the project because we think this is going to be a great asset for Hal Lotus. We're really, really excited about it, and I'm hoping obviously that we can get approved today. I think it would be wonderful. So first off, you know, the original plan, we showed three hundred and sixty six residential units, and this was in the apartment style format. We had units on top of one another. We had three story buildings. It was a combination of three story and two story buildings. You kind of cascaded towards Bandera Road up to three stories, but Hal Lotus didn't want that, and so we changed that, and we dropped our unit count from three hundred and sixty six to two hundred and twenty units. We switched the building height from three stories. You guys said no. We listened loud and clear. We dropped all buildings to two stories. No apartment style. We didn't want units on top of one another. That's not how we live out here in Hal Lotus. That was discussed with the citizens. So we didn't. These are all, you know, these are townhomes, single family homes and duplexes. They're larger. They're going to get more rent. I know there was an expressed interest in having higher end units, having units that might be more suitable for families, for nurses, police officers, college students, they're trying to get their first job, people that want to be in Hal Lotus but can't afford a six hundred thousand dollar house right now at eight percent interest rates. This is a great spot for them to kind of land on their feet and feel like they're a part of the community. Finally, we were asked to provide some more retail. The city council, I think, was was concerned about fiscal responsibility. I think that's really noble. I don't think you see that in a lot of cities these days around the country. And so we increased the amount of retail. I'm also going to go over kind of how this project does have fiscal responsibility. It's actually a great investment for the city of Hal Lotus. Last but not least, well, maybe it's least, we had some food trucks in the last plan. We decided to scrap those, so no more food trucks. But we are going to have some very nice restaurants and bar and indoor outdoor concepts. So again, two hundred and twenty townhouse duplex and single family home style residential units. Thirty nine thousand, eight hundred eighty square feet of retail. That's a lot of retail. I'll kind of elaborate in another slide how that compares to some of our favorite spots in Old Town and how much retail we're really planning to add to the city. It's going to be great. No buildings exceeding two stories in height and tree buffers in greenbelt areas. This is something that the owner of the property was really, really adamant about. She really has a passion for Hal Lotus, keeping it high quality, preserving the trees. So we're doing a forty foot tree buffer around the entire property, and we're weaving a trail that's going to be open to the community, and that's why we're calling it Trailhead at Hal Lotus. I mean, it's basically a park, but it's part of the development. We think it's going to be great. There's also another buffer between the retail and the residential. This is a twenty foot tree buffer because we want to have a little separation, a little privacy for the residents that live there, and also a little privacy for our commercial patrons. Next slide, please. So this is a conceptual kind of idea of what we want to do for the retail. We're going to have a mix of buildings, parking away from Bandera Roads. You're not going to see a sea of parking in front of you like you would for a strip center or some kind of conventional development. We're doing the parking behind the retail concepts. So that way you have a nice pedestrian experience. You really can soak in those trees that we're preserving, really have a place that's just fun for the community, community spaces. And again, about about forty thousand square feet of retail. Next slide, please. These are our residential renderings. You can see there's a a real combination of building types. We don't want this to be cookie cutter. We want this to be unique and nice for Hal Lotus. We're using a hill country vernacular and hill country materials. And you can see limestone, board and batten, cord and steel and corrugated metal. It's it's really cool. I mean, I think these residential renderings are beautiful. Again, here's our materials palette, really trying to fit in. We don't want this project to draw attention to itself. We want it to sit within the community, be behind these tree buffers that we have and just be a very cozy, nice place for people that are downsizing, nurses, police officers, people trying to get their entry level jobs. I think it's going to be great. So that's the outline of the project. You guys have seen it before. We've been discussing this throughout the months. I wanted to go over why. And I think it's important, and I'm going to try to make three points today for city council. The first point I'm making is this is a, this project is sensitive to its surroundings. We've listened. We've dramatically changed the project. We've listened, we've dramatically changed the project. We respect the wishes of the landowner. We are trying to do a design that's within the aesthetic of the hill country in Halotas. And we think it's going to be great. Most of the opposition that I've heard throughout the six months we've been doing this have really been from the Halotas Park Estates neighborhood. And I can understand, I mean, they, they live up, up on the hill up there that they're, they're concerned because they can see this property. I mean, I, I could understand, I empathize. But at the same time, you know, the homes up there are, some of them are a hundred twenty feet elevated above this property. Some are ninety feet elevated above this property. There's going to be no impact to the views. The views are still going to be amazing. They're amazing now and they're going to be amazing when we do this project. Next slide, please. Finally, here's an outline of all the tree buffers that we've provided. Um, again, there's a lot of concerns about, oh, you know, there's residential units here. How's it going to affect my neighborhood? Well, there's no vehicular access to Halotas Park Estates. This is a pretty contained project. Um, it's a mixed-use development. Kind of like the mixed-use developments that we've heard about in these hearings. You know, we've heard about Lock and Terra, we've heard about the Pearl. Um, we've heard about places that have a combination of residential and commercial uses. Because that would make, that's what makes them financially feasible and that's what makes them great places to live. Next slide, please. Finally, just wanted to discuss the rent levels. I know there were some concerns. Oh, we don't want them to be too affordable. Uh, but we also want people to be able to live there. So, you know, these are, these are pretty, these are pretty pricey. I mean, they're, they're, they're not as pricey as getting a six hundred thousand dollar home at an eight percent interest rate. That's going to set you at five thousand dollars a month. But you're looking at twenty-five hundred for the average, pretty much for a two-bedroom unit. Um, that's a pretty, that's a pretty good rent. This is for, this is for young professionals. This is for, you know, nurses, police officers, entry-level college, you know, kids trying to get their first job. Um, this is kind of the place for them and I think they'll be at home here in Halotas. Next slide, please. And finally, actually, could you go to the previous slide? I think we skipped over one. Um, this is just comparing kind of the amount of retail that we see at some of our favorite places in Old Town Halotas. Um, this is, I got this information from Bear County, the property tax website. So overall, for El Chaparral, Floris Country Store, B Daddy's Barbecue, Halotas Country Club, shops at Old Town Halotas and Halotas Gallery, the combined amount of retail space is forty-three thousand seven hundred nineteen square feet. We're proposing thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet of similar complementary concepts that we think are going to be, it's going to create a really awesome rising tide for Old Town and for Halotas. We're all benefit, all businesses are going to benefit. Also, in regards to what we're doing with the PUD to kind of guarantee quality, is we've worked with the city. Uh, the existing B-three zoning has a hundred and seventy different uses that are allowed. Some of these uses are auto repair, you know, fast food restaurants, um, strip center retail. There's also hotels, um, RV parks. I mean, those are, those are considered transient uses. Uh, I would say by any, any definition. We're scrapping so many of those uses, really keeping it to the high-quality uses that we've discussed with the city and that we've discussed with the citizens. Uh, we're going from one hundred and seventy allowed uses to just thirty-six. That's a significant quality control effort. Finally, I, I really think it's, it's fiscally responsible to support this project. This is a good investment for the city of Halotas. Um, this is going to be about a seventy million dollar project when it's all said and done. Twenty-one and a half acres is a lot of property. It's big. And right now, the combined acreage is just generating thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the city. That's not a lot. It's really un, an unproductive use of land. This mixed-use development will generate two hundred eighteen thousand dollars and nineteen cents for the city. That's a lot. That's a lot of money and that can fund, you know, new service, uh, personnel that can, that can help fund um, city projects. And that's recurring annual revenue just from the property taxes alone. Actually, I have a little typo on the next piece. It's not Halotas City Taxes, but that's Northside Independent School District. Right now, the combined value and taxing of those properties just generates fifty thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars for Northside Independent School District in its existing condition. The Trailhead at Halotas Project will generate eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for Northside Independent School District. That's a lot of buses. That's a lot of teachers, some of which will be living at the project. And that's just, that's just a lot of extra annual revenue to use for good services. Next slide, please. Finally, we really think this will be a rising tide that'll lift all boats. The retail that we want to do here is, is very cool. These are indoor-outdoor concepts. Uh, we're involved in a two hundred and seventy million dollar entertainment district in South Austin. We're involved in several projects there. Some of the bars and restaurants in that district are some of the highest grossing in the state. And we think by doing complementary concepts to Old Town, that will be supported by this, the residential use as well. Will really create a rising tide that lifts all boats. It's going to create revenue increases for all the businesses in Old Town. It's going to make Old Town, it's going to put it more on the map and it's just going to fit Halotas. You know, the, the bar on the top right-hand portion of the slide is the Moon Tower Saloon. We're partnered with them on a few projects in that entertainment district. They're actually interested in doing some concepts in Old Ten, or, um, at the Trailhead. And, you know, just, I'm just trying to juxtapose, we don't, we don't want an AT&T store or some kind of just basic boring strip center retail. I think having an entertainment district will really increase sales taxes and it'll be fantastic for the city. So anyways, just to recap, here's, here's a slide. I really appreciate everyone's time and, uh, open for questions. Thank you so much.
I have a question. Um, is this the same plan that you showed to Patty and Zoney?
Yes.
So you did not change the maximum of, um, you have three and four-unit townhomes that are attached and the ordinance, the PUD is supposed to be a maximum of two units attached to the same unit. So you did not change that?
No, we, we, we have kept the plan the same from.
So you're, you're going to ask for a variance to be allowed to do this?
Um, that wasn't anything, that's not to my knowledge. I don't think we were asked to do that by the city.
Well, it's in our ordinance, the PUD ordinance states that you can only have a maximum of two units attached to the same unit. So two townhomes can be attached with one wall. You can't have four, you can't have three. So are you going to be asking for a variance to, to fit? Are, are you going to keep it that way or can you change your, your, uh, townhome plan to fit our ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's new to me. I mean, I'm sure we.
It wasn't new to, it, it was mentioned to you by Alex Blue at the P and Z meeting.
Yeah, I mean, there were a lot of things mentioned at the meeting. I, I think we're going to, I think, you know, our, our plan right now is the existing plan we have, we think it's great. Um, you know, if that was, if that was something that was, uh, of, of an important.
It was, it was important and, and it was overlooked.
It was, it was actually written, your, the ordinance that was sent to you for legal review is written that way. It's saying, it's, it's just saying, you know, two homes, that there only one wall can be, um, shared.
So, well, it's, I mean.
So this, this get a clarification, uh, Frank, if you can shine a light on this. Uh, uh, in, in general, a PUD application is in itself a variance from all ordinances what together is an overriding, rewriting of a whole new ordinance for this one piece of property. But in the extent of the allowance in the application, can the application be for multi-wall or does it have to be two units maximum, one shared wall?
A P, a PUD is allows the council, that's what the planning and zoning allows the council to, to negotiate what they would like to have included in the development. For example, under state law, we can no longer control, uh, materials. But in a PUD, you're able to require certain materials to be included in the development so that the developer and the city are in agreement. So as a PUD negotiated, you could add more than one wall on two buildings. That's part of the negotiating.
That's, that was my understanding. So my understanding is what you're doing today is you're submitting as is with, uh, there's some two-unit and there's some three-unit and some four-unit with, uh, shared walls and that that is what they're submitting for our overall approval amongst many other variances that would be.
So just, I just, just to make it clear that you ignored that and just did what you did for your financial.
Well, no, my, my understanding was kind of the same as the mayor just said. Uh, my understanding was the PUD is kind of a flexible zoning and sort of a negotiation. If, if the, if the.
Yeah, so what it is, is that when we sent it to you, it was never sent back with that correction or with that change. So the ordinance is your PUD. And so what's written in there is what you need to follow. It, even though your plans change, you never came back and requested that the ordinance change to reflect your updated plan.
Uh, before we get too far down on that, my, uh, just provide some light. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. I'm not, uh.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, no.
I know we still have to go through this and I have other things to say. But that's my only question for right now. If anyone else has a question, but I do have things, other things to say after he's finished.
So just clarification, did, whether they responded to that or not, I'm only, this is just a point of technicality. Can the application continue on, uh, when the plan's being submitted is with four, even though the ordinance states two? My understanding is that it can proceed. We would vote on it whether or not we like it or not, but it can proceed unless you.
Then you're correct, Mayor. Uh, again, a PUD is, is negotiated between the city and the developer. Council has the final say. So what has been negotiated between the staff and, uh, P and P and Z, what was included, not included, the changes they made, that's part of the negotiation. But the council has the final say as to what they like in the PUD and what they don't like in the PUD or reject the PUD completely.
Anybody else have any questions? Um, I wanted to, uh, talk a little bit about, about traffic. Uh, people, uh, you know, our mayor mentioned that if we had a retail there, there'd be much, much more traffic. Well, I'd like to talk a little bit about, uh, I'm just going to do a little comparison here. Calaber Road, Calaber Road is parallel to here. Of course, it's just down the other, down Glam Road. Uh, Calaber Road on one stretch of two, two-point-one miles, uh, that would be from sixteen oh four to fifteen sixteen Glam Road. On that, no, we're talking about Calaber Road. They have a total of rental housing. They have two thousand five hundred eighty-six rental units there. They're apartment complexes. More than five thousand people. Um, and I don't even know how many cars. And that doesn't count the residential subdivisions. And how many of you like to drive down Calaber Road? Calaber Road is a nightmare. Uh, Alba, Elmo Ranch. And why? It's because it has a zoning. Uh, it's in, it's basically in San Antonio. Okay. Um, it is one of the worst streets for traffic and accidents in Bear County. It takes thirty to forty minutes to drive two miles from sixteen oh four, from fifteen sixty to sixteen oh four on Calaber Road. And this is not just during rush hour. This is on non-work weekends. Traffic is horrendous and it is not because of the retail that's there on sixteen oh four. It's because of the rental units. Um, now, Banderas Road from sixteen oh four to San Antonio Ranch is four-point-three miles. So it's a double stretch that I'm referring to. Now, we have a lot of subdivisions. We don't have a lot of rental places. Our subdivisions that egress onto Banderas Road, Stanton Run, Halotas Crossing, Cedar Springs, Halotas Park Estates, Los Reyes, Ranch Creek. Um, and then we're, now we're going to have Banderas Ranch and the Ranch Creek Apartments that are going to be completed uh, eventually. Those are gonna, those are gonna have what? Five hundred and thirty rental units. Um, so ju- just rental units is seven hundred and seventy-four that are going to be in close proximity, right there on Banderas Road. We have the Elm Creek Apartments, two hundred and twenty-four units, which is basically next to the Pizza Hut. The seventeen units of the haciendas, which I understand are now, many, some of them are going to be going retail rather than, um, uh, residential. Uh, so the point is, um, you want to add another two hundred and twenty rental units. How many rental units, uh, do we really need in Halotas? Uh, and do we really want to become Calaber Road? Uh, because the more we allow these kinds of, of, uh, subdivisions or, um, I guess, okay, plan unit developments with a lot of rentals in there. The more that, we've already allowed one and because we allowed that and we don't even know the ramifications of that, and I think that's a really good point. We do not know the ramification of the one that we already approved. And now, but because we approved it, I'm sure y'all heard about it, go, okay, Halotas is, is ripe for another one. Okay, well then there's, there, we, there are other places that we could do this too, you know, so I'm seeing this is gonna, we opened a Pandera's box by allowing that, but we did. Um, and, uh, I just don't want Ben, uh, uh, Halotas to become Alamo Ranch. I don't want to, I, it is tough right now getting through. I mean, right now we're looking at the traffic because they're working on the roads. They're working on the roads because of all the people that are moving out here down Banderas Road. Um, but, um, I do not believe that, um, I, I think the traffic is, is, is to me reason enough not to allow this. But there are, of course, other reasons and I think our citizens gave quite a few. Um, again, I'm an elected official. I, I, um, I like to look at all things. What is best for the community? What do the citizens want? And if it's legal, those are the things that I, I always look at. And I wanted, I just wanted to kind of take the council back a couple, a few years about two other situations that uh, the citizens spoke and they were listened to. Uh, one was in twenty-eleven when the Iron Horse, uh, residents came in force like, like what we have tonight because they did not want to park. They did not want a park behind uh, Iron Horse Canyon in the valley that the city owns. We own five hundred ninety-four acres in a greenbelt. And, uh, you would have thought we were going to put a skyscraper back there. Uh, with all the people from Iron Horse Canyon who came and spoke against that. Um, and so, uh, after, the, after they spoke, they didn't want it. I remember thinking, you know, well, even a walking trail, you know, well, people didn't want people walking behind their yards, looking through their fences, theft, the same, the same reasons you hear tonight. Um, I kind of thought, well, it would be nice for the community to have a ni- a really nice walking trail through there. But just, but it's just about a walking trail. Well, no, then you have to put lights up and then you have to have police presence. And anyway, anyway, the bottom line is, we voted it down, the city council unanimously. When you have citizens come and tell you they don't want something. And yes, it was in their community and it may, it may have helped others in, in the community to have a walking trail. But the citizens didn't want it. We voted against it and I was on that council. Fast forward a few more, a few years later, uh, the, um, the PUD, there was a PUD of, for townhomes, again, in Iron Horse Canyon, uh, on their main drag. Uh, it was already zoned for townhomes. It was the only parcel in this city that was zoned for townhomes. Uh, citizens didn't want it. So the, the developer comes and says, well, let's do, let's put a PUD, then I can do some different things. It was only forty-six townhomes. Citizens from, uh, Iron Horse Canyon came. They said didn't want it. It was going to cause congestion, traffic, very bad for the city, for their neighborhood, blah, 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 blah. Again, um, Rich was one of those people who spoke at P and Z against it, against that particular, uh, development. So anyway, uh, bottom line is, we voted it down. We didn't want to do it. Um, so, uh, now they came back, we worked with them, the, the, the homeowners associated worked with them. They came up with another plan, but it ended up not being feasible and it went away. Okay. Lucky, lucky for Iron Horse Canyon. The point is, we have to listen to what the citizens want. If it's legal, If it's good for, if, if it's good for the city. And I think this is, this particular development that you're proposing is not good for the citizens and for the city. So that's, that's what I have to say. And I, and I do have an issue with the location. I think it's a very, I don't have a problem with this particular PUD. You have a, you, you call it as retail, a dog park, a splash pad. And, and I don't know what else you have there, but they're not, to me, that's not retail. That's not going to bring in a lot of money. I mean, you're putting numbers up there, but I'm, I'm not seeing it. And I said, the location to me is, is an issue. It's not a good, it's not a good place for that. And it, and to give up a good retail spot that we could help direct and bring the, the kinds of businesses we want to be, would be a dereliction of our duty to the city and to the citizens. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Do, do you mind if I respond to some of those comments and kind of try to clear some things up?
Sure.
So one, one thing, I, I'm not sure of all the conditions on Calabar Road and that was, that was a lot of numbers. I, I'm not smart enough to figure all that out on the spot, so I apologize. I do want to say something I was thinking about when I was driving up here today and I was running out of gas. And I stopped over at the Quick Trip on Scenic Loop and I filled up on gas. And on my way over, I saw, you know, I saw the Christmas lights up there in Halotas Park Estates. I saw the site that we're trying to do, the trailhead where we're trying to propose the trailhead at Halotas. And I stopped at Quick Trip. And I thought about the name Quick Trip. I mean, it says it all. I, I was sitting there filling my, my truck with gas. And I watched probably 70 people get in and out of there in about 15 minutes. I had a little, a little milk and some Oreos because these hearings can be a little stressful. And the name says it all, right? Quick Trip. It's literally a place you go for five minutes. How often do you leave your home? It's an intuitive question. You know, sometimes these numbers and all this stuff, people can get very confused, but it's an intuitive question. You're not leaving your home 38 times a day, like what was said at one of the planning and zoning meetings. You might be leaving your home and having maybe two, three car trips at most, maybe four on the weekends. Your home is a place where you reside. And that's why it doesn't generate as much traffic. It's intuitive. We've also provided studies. We provided a study from a civil engineer that does traffic analysis showing that the previously proposed plan with the 366 units generates way less traffic than a full commercial use allowed by the V3. I just think it's intuitive. The second question I think was about a different neighborhood. You know, I can see concerns about height and density, especially when you're backed up to another single fam, a single family home. This is someone's home. They're concerned about their privacy. They don't want something towering over them. And we worked with two neighborhood associations in New Braunfels. We're in a, a neighborhood that we're about a five minute walk to the Green Historic District. These are the locations we like to put residents because they want that walkable lifestyle. Well, we worked with those neighbors because they're literally backed up right to us. We, we put a privacy fence up. We did all sorts of things for them. We had, we did a two-story buffer zone. We cascade up to three stories as we get closer to the busy commercial road. But that was flat land right next to that neighborhood. In this case, you have, you have folks that are 100 feet elevated above this property. We have zero access to that neighborhood. And so I just think it's a little bit, I don't, I'm not sure of this neighborhood you're talking about, like what their concerns were or exactly how it shapes out. But I think in this particular case, you know, I, I think, you know, we're, we're being very sensitive. We're not connecting to their neighborhood, but we are doing something that many, many residents of Halotas have supported and have sent in letters of support and have spoken about today. So that's my.
Let's move on to Councilmember Sanders and to clarify, the, the PUD was actually eventually approved by that city council at the time. In fact, that's really why Councilmember Sanders ended up running for council.
I was knee deep involved in all that. Luckily, yeah. So anyway, sir. So I've actually taken a lot of time looking at your new proposal. And I, I must agree, you have really listened to most of our concerns, those things that you could actually control, right? If you recall, my biggest concern last go around was balance. And I know you talked a little bit about fiscal responsibility just a few minutes ago. My concern, and I know the mayor may have said something about, there's this balance right up here on council. You know, we have to worry about how the stream, how, how our funding stream keeps the city running, right? So you have property tax and then you have sales tax. So the numbers, I think I heard you say 218K we could be making right now. Or if you developed it, it would be, we would be collecting that property tax.
Yeah, for the property tax, yes.
But you can't tell me sales tax and that's my problem. And I know we're, we're almost to the right equilibrium in the city. But the data's misleading and data always can be a little misleading, right? It's skewed. We got maybe two, three businesses in Halotas that make up 70% of that. So, so my concern is, and I agree with Councilmember Massey about, I'm still not convinced about the business model at the very front end. I really wish you could work the numbers where you could flip it and be 70% commercial, 20% residential. I, I really wish you could work that. That's my hangup. As far as you downsizing, creating townhomes, putting a little bit of living space for those people that are going to be there. I couldn't tell that the walking trail was still part of this second proposal or this new proposal. So I'm glad to hear that you said that's still going to be there. I agree that the front end is a fun hangout kind of concept. I just don't know if that works in Halotas. That works probably in San Antonio. I travel a lot for business, right? So I get to hang out downtown Colorado Springs, Sac, downtown Sacramento, a lot of different places. That concept works there. It absolutely would work there. I'm not so sure it works here. So that's my second concern. And three, I hear people starting to make comparisons between the PUD we approved and this one up for vote tonight. My opinion, each development stands on its own merit. And so to start comparing apples to oranges, I think is not the right way to approach that. Because there's a lot of green space and a lot of buffer space, just for example, with the PUD that's approved with the neighbors, the residential neighbors that are directly connected to that PUD that we approved. And then I have to take into another consideration, sir. So we basically will reduce the amount of sales tax capability on the PUD that we approved. Our, I'm gonna call them our forefathers that decided who zoned all this. They had, they had a mathematical formula because I've talked to some of the older, older folks in town. So when everything does get developed, whether it's residential or business, we would end up somewhere about 50/50, right? Sale, back to my, my concern about sales tax and property tax. That's my concern with this development. I love the 40 foot setback, Ms. Moore. I, I really love that idea and the fact that you're holding the developer accountable for that. I, I like that. There's a lot I like about your, your proposal. It's the economic responsibility that I think the residents, the citizens of Halotas have, have tasked me to not just look at the moment, but look five, 10 years down the road. And, and, and there's, you could probably make arguments saying, well, this is the future and. And I think you've done that before. We don't want to look like Leon Valley. That's my concern, but I would never trash what, what you've proposed here because I think you've done really good work here. You've done a lot of good work. I can't get myself past that point though, the sales tax piece.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good question. So I mean, I'm, I'm curious what the top three sales tax generating businesses are. I'm assuming the Walmart, right? I mean, I'm sure that's a big generator.
Number two is Walmart and our number one is eight times the size of Walmart. So.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
And then we go on to the next 30, which are very similar, and then the next 140, which are small.
Okay. So there's three, like, you know, big generators of sales tax revenue. I'm not sure what they all are. This is a, this is a mid-block parcel. So, you know, if you look at Walmart, it's on a, it's on a corner. It has a street going next to it. If you look at the Banderas Ranch properties at the corner of Scenic Loop. From what we've been told, mid-block properties, you know, like a, a big, a really, really big box. You know, because we were, we're looking at, we're like, well, you know, I mean, they, they are opposed to big boxes. Is it going to happen here? We were kind of presenting that in the first original.
If I may, let's, let's, let's keep this focused on to specific questions. We're getting kind of drifted on to more theoretical theory and we want to get to the, to the point of the question.
I, I think I, I pretty much said what I needed to say. I was just giving you a chance to respond. And when we talk about space and I could see, I could very well see something, if you guys are familiar with Heebner Oaks over there by I-10. And Heebner, that's kind of, I think in my mind, that's kind of the, you know, retail space I'm looking for. There's a little bit of everything there and it's kind of eclectic. They have an area where they have like these bronze doe, female doe deer scattered throughout the thing. And they have, you know, stuff for, for women, kind of name, name brands like Talbot and Klein and all that stuff. And anyways, that I think is what I'm hearing from the community. That's what the community's looking.
I'm, I'm wondering if it's something where, I mean, we're, we're presenting all these facts and we're, we're trying to collect information. We're trying to make the right decision. I'm wondering if that's something we should, we should study further and, and study kind of the viability of this mid-block piece. I'm open to bringing, to having third parties look at it and, and telling the, asking about the viability of the mid-block piece. You know, we, we do this stuff for a living, right? Like we look at the financial models. You know, if, if you want to balance this development, make it really great for Halotas, have the tree preservation, respect the wishes of the landowner. Provide a great community experience for folks. The residential and all the, all of the revenue generated from the residential helps to attract some of these really cool, more local, unique to Halotas concepts. And so that's how the economics works. In terms of a corner piece or something like Heebner Oaks where it's Heebner Road and a big highway. That's like Maine and Maine for these retail development folks. This mid-block parcel, I mean, there's kind of a reason it's not Heebner Oaks today. I would be willing to study that and I'd be willing to look at that further and, and have some third party opinions if that's, if that could help. I mean, I know, because I know that's such a big concern and I want to do something right for the city.
So, and, and let's move on here, but what you're talking about there doesn't require variance at all. Big box can come in and that would be a big box development with, and doesn't require variance at all. You can build that anytime you want on that property. So let's focus on this particular application for this particular plan. Anything else outside of what could it would will be answered after we vote on this because this is the only thing that should be talked about, not what could go there. Let's try to focus that on. With that, we'll go Councilmember Stones.
I just want to kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Massey said about Alex Blue's point at the planning and zoning meeting. And when I look at the PUD, how it's written, it says residential housing consistent with area zoning. So what you're asking for is not consistent with area zoning. And that, that, that is my concern as well. I do want to say traffic. I have a friend, we have a good family friend who runs an engineering firm and no way contacted, connected to this project. He had run numbers for the last PUD. I asked him to run numbers. His traffic person said that proximate, this would be 30% less traffic. So what Mayor Whitehead said is, we want to make decisions, but we want to make decisions on facts. So my concern with this development is not traffic based on those, that those estimates I got. Thankfully, somebody helped me out and ran those numbers. I did have a resident contact me with concerns about the tree buffer. I'm not a numbers person by nature. So when you say 40 feet, to me, that doesn't seem like a lot. Like the size of this room is about 40 feet, right? So can you talk a little bit about how you came to that?
Yeah. So, so I mean, the size of the room, if, if, it, it looks really open and easy to see through right now. But if it was stuffed with trees, with a trail winding through, it would look a lot different, right? It's just an, it's just a optics thing. We came up with that. I was actually walking in a, a park in Montreal and was kind of studying with my wife, like what the distance was for these trails. And it was like 40 feet. It seemed like a really nice generous trail.
Also, for purposes of discussion, let's specifically, it was mandated by the landowner, the 40 feet. If, how it came out, it was mandated by the landowner and contract, so.
And, but we are doing 40 feet, not, not mandated. It was just voluntary around the whole property. So that's something we decided would complement that desire.
And then the only other thing I'd like to add is since I've been on council, I've gotten more citizen email feedback against this project than any other thing that I've had on my agenda. So that's, that's all I have.
Councilmember Kew.
I would have to agree with Councilman Sanders that one of our big concerns should be the viability of our sales tax. And I don't really see that this project is going to help bridge that gap, especially if we eventually lose our number one sales tax revenue. On the other hand, I've heard concerns from Cynthia Massey regarding the traffic. And when you're considering that your retail space that we're talking about here in Lotus, a little over a mile worth of that, comparing it to Calabar, which is over four miles, not to mention the enhancements they're doing, they're doing on Banderas Road. There's no way that's going to be an issue here. So I don't see traffic at all being an issue. And as Cynthia has also found out through her research, it's not an issue. So it's, yes, I'm sorry. Yes. So I don't know. I'm kind of, I'm kind of mixed on this one. I, I see some very positive aspects, a very good design. You've listened to us. But ultimately, we got to consider the future of Halotas and, and the viability of, you know, income.
Sure. Could, could I see, I mean, if, if, if we're still kind of studying the issue and, because this is a big decision tonight. And I'm wondering if this is something, I mean, I don't know if you can request a continuance and we can study the sales tax question and really kind of come to an understanding of what.
Well, we, we have, we have the item up for, so we're going to take a, a vote on this. We're going to listen to Councilmember Merchant and his concerns and then we'll conclude this and take action here.
Look, you have a great plan. You changed it. You made all these nice accommodations for us. We've heard a lot of citizens. We heard Ms. Mike, Ms. Moore. There's a lot to consider in this tonight and yeah, that's where I'm at. I mean, there's a lot to consider. Good, bad. There's just a lot here.
I will kind of sum up with some and then if there's any pertinent factual information to add, then we can go ahead and go to action. But I do appreciate what you have submitted. Mostly for the effort to see what we can do here. Halotas, it's a great piece of property. Something needs to go there. Again, I restate, we've got great balance now, but we, if, if anything, we actually need a few more residents to support the businesses we already have. We need a lot more residents to support any more businesses. So this is something that we have to grapple with. And I think that some form of, at some place, there needs to be some additional residences. This density again, is still 50% higher. To be equivalent with the PUD that was approved, there would only be a maximum of 150 units instead of 220. And that would be matching appropriate density per acre for our most dense project. But is there any final statement of fact or specific?
There's going to be a lot of people, they're building a lot of subdivisions down Banderas Road. So there's going to be a lot of bodies, people, residents that are going to come through Halotas and stop here. I'm not worried about that at all.
All right. Well, with no further questions, the question at hand for, and I lost my agenda item number, item, for agenda item number eight, will be voting for the approval. A vote of yay would be for the approval of item number eight as written. So all in favor of approving item number eight as written, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All opposed, say nay. Motion is denied.
Thank you.
This item, let's hold the form. Appreciate that. Uh, item number nine is going to be postponed. I'll pull that item and postpone it for an agenda in January. At this time, looking for a motion in a second. To discuss and take action on item number ten as written.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move we discuss and take action on agenda item number ten as written.
Motion by Sanders, second by.
I'll second.
Merchant, councilman.
So um, after watching this at the P and Z meeting um a couple of weeks ago, most of this uh appears to be refurbishing signs that were starting to get dull. There's some addition of some very small signs which are directional and informative. And uh, and I'm looking at the overall signage square footage is actually less than what we already have in place today. And um, it looks like it puts in a very viable master sign plan, which has been asked for by um council and P and Z several, several years ago. So it looks like it meets um all those conditions. P and Z uh recommended uh unanimously to um to support it. Uh, I agree with P and Z. Uh, I have no issues with it.
Agree with Councilman Sanders. P and Z went through this pretty, pretty thoroughly. So I'm gonna side with P and Z.
Oh yeah, no, I was actually at the meeting, so I've already been through the whole thing and I agree.
Okay. No further discussion. All in favor, we are, so I take it your motion is to approve all signs A, B, C, and D?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, so all in favor of approving item number ten, A, B, C, and D collectively, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I'll look for a motion and a second to discuss, take action on item number eleven as written. Anyone? Euler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve. Discuss and take action on agenda item number eleven.
Okay. Motion by Sanders, second by.
I'll second.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so this is a street maintenance plan by adding old FM fifteen sixty roadway drainage improvements, uh, including but uh limited to the publication of associate bid documentation award of contracted lowest responsible bidder and/or use of purchasing cooperative program. Uh, not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand for the dedicated street maintenance fund from the dedicated street maintenance fund. Again, this is for uh parking we've been discussing along here. Uh, we found out that we're able to go ahead and take this from our street maintenance funds. We don't have to take out a budget. We've got dedicated funds for it. Uh, this will uh more than likely be the permanent and final instead of uh hodgepodge patching it and looking with concrete uh all the way from basically where the old fire station was, all the way here to City Hall driveway. And so uh, and if you have any specific, does anybody have any specific questions or issues?
I, I, I just want to say I'm so happy that we're doing this. I always felt that was such an eyesore as we're coming to City Hall, right? Especially when people come to boat and they drive by. Um, so I'm really happy we're going to be able to do this and we're going to do it with concrete, right? Uh, my only question is which, we talked about drainage. Is the intent, we're going to lift it up?
So it's going, i- i- again, there's some engineering goes in this uh to get it all the way. So it'll drain properly all the way across and uh cross our driveway and into you know, the drainage culvert, right?
Yeah, it'll drain out to the culvert, whereas it should have been doing all along.
That's my only question. I'm excited. Corey, make it happen. Anyways, I, I'm good.
Councilmember, anything to add?
I, I think this is a great idea.
How does this affect? Uh, when does this happen in relation to when we're tearing down that building?
Apparently will happen before that. Uh, the building would have no, uh, he's talking about the storage building.
Oh yeah. Affected that, no.
Cause there's, you know, big tractors, whatever.
And, and we have to wait. Some part of the project right now, so we don't want to invest in something while Sauce is tearing up some, so we need to get, let them complete their project. But in the meantime, we'd like to out to go for bid, so that we'll have everything in plan, in place.
Okay, with no further discussion, all in favor approving item number eleven as written, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Then we're motion in a second to discuss, take action on item number twelve uh concerning the EDC entering in a service agreement with Charter Communications. Uh, or not, not to exceed ten thousand per year for term of three years. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, discuss, take action on twelve as written. Motion by Merchant, second by. Kato? All right, uh, briefly, if you don't mind, share with us any uh nuts and bolts of this.
Absolutely. Uh, and the reason for kind of fast-tracking this one is the lead time for uh receiving fiber, uh dedicated fiber lines uh to businesses. It's a minimum ninety day uh lead time. Uh, they also have to do a site survey, which could take thirty to forty-five days on top of that. Uh, so in order to get internet to the future uh Halotus Visitor and Business Center, uh, we need to get this started. Otherwise, it would be summer before we uh could actually open the doors and start collecting rent. Uh, did go out to the two providers uh here in the area, both AT&T and Spectrum. Uh, Spectrum ended up having um uh the services we were looking for at a reasonable price. Uh, and I can tell you, it's actually considerably cheaper. Uh, we're probably looking at getting a fifty by fifty dedicated fiber line uh with five uh dedicated uh static IP addresses. Uh, along with a secondary kind of a redundant system with LTE service. So in the event uh a line gets severed or you lose connection, we do actually have uh backup for the center. Um, so on an annual basis, we're looking at around eighty-two hundred a year. Um, I know the EDC uh board had approved not to exceed uh forty thou, yeah, forty thousand over a three-year period. Uh, and that's when we were looking at the AT&T quote, but again, Spectrum has come in considerably cheaper.
Anybody have any comments?
Are those overhead lines? Are we going to dig them underground and put them, pile them in?
Right now, I do not know.
We're going to dig up the road in front of this building.
Um, they're trying to identify exactly where they're going to route the lines right now. We're currently under the site survey. Um, majority of the construction, I think, like with the city uh is uh bared by uh Spectrum.
Fibers already there coming into the site of, of Bandera. So it's not, um, it's more of a connection type situation.
Anybody comments? Okay. No further discussion. All in favor of approving item number twelve as written, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. So this brings us item number thirteen. This is a discussion and information of ordinance number twenty-three dash O two, no through traffic in Beverly Hills subdivision. I put this item on the agenda so that we were able to discuss and bring some facts. Uh, I'm prepared to give a little summary of what's been going on, some information. And if there's any additional discussion needs to be had, we can have it. Um, the issue at hand is that the city of Halotus uh boundaries are basically at the uh end of Beverly Hills subdivision. Uh, historically, uh, there was a uh group, Halpenny is at the end of it and the only way into that was through uh Beverly Hills Drive. And they have been utilizing that for a long period of time. However, uh, they were also uh uh offered many times to be annexed into the state of Halotus, but uh never decided to annex for a number of reasons. Uh, not the least of which is that it requires hundred percent of the uh owners to decide to be uh annexed in and uh, excuse me, for privatization was a hundred percent. It's still required just a maximum for uh uh annexation.
Fifty.
Fifty, fifty percent for annexation requires.
Fifty-one percent.
Requires a hundred percent for privatization. So two separate issues. Privatization cannot be handled by the city of Halotus because it's not in the city of Halotus. It's Bear County. So that's an issue that has to be taken up with uh, so if you had wanted to put gates, you would have to become privatized under the authority of Bear County. I can let you run now. There is not a lot of love for privatization from Bear County, so that's not a, not a likely uh end. What we were left with was the development of Davis Ranch. Uh, before the development of Davis Ranch, Beverly Hills enjoyed a low traffic rate of about six hundred vehicles per day. Uh, we found that from readings we have taken throughout the years before Davis Ranch was built. Uh, once that connection was made, which by the way was a Bear County connection, not, again, not city of Halotus, because it's not city of Halotus. Uh, there was an, the equal amount of houses as what is in the entire city of Halotus built in Davis Ranch and associated other subdivisions that are linked with it right behind Beverly Hills. That is now yielded, as a matter of fact, I got some uh from December. Uh, took some traffic readings uh here in the week of December second through uh the ninth. And uh, we are getting uh roughly speaking uh thousand cars per day above uh uh the regular Davis Ranch, actually the regular Beverly Hills traffic. So going from uh six hundred to roughly uh twenty-five hundred or so uh cars. We also are getting speed reports. I have, we set out a um traffic monitor that had a uh radar in it. And uh, it is posted for thirty miles an hour. Uh, we checked both directions and the average speed is twenty-eight. However, the high speed is sixty, one way and fifty-three the other. Uh, while the fifty percentile is twenty-eight and the eighty-fifth percentile is thirty-two miles an hour, uh, the point remains that there are still two hundred, forty, fifty, two hundred and sixty, about twenty-six percent are, are speeding and some excessively. This goes to the cause of the people of Beverly Hills. It said, we have a safety issue. We also have a financial issue. That road is not, your road is not built and our road is not built for that kind of traffic. It would cost a huge amount of money. Imagine your road times however long for the distance we have in Beverly Hills and associated roads to be able to handle that traffic, which is what led us to the only possible uh tool that we had at our disposal to be able to affect traffic and that was to install a no pass-through ordinance. Is the only way to be able to have any type of effect on the Beverly, uh Davis Ranch traffic coming in for the protection of our people in the city of uh Halotus. These will be the Beverly Hills subdivision. Uh, this of course is not a hundred percent. It's not a gate. We can't build a gate. There's no legal way to build a gate. We can't build a gate. You can't build a gate. They can't build a gate. Beverly Hills could privatize, but again, uh Halpenny, you've looked at privatization takes a hundred percent. Uh, you saw the difficulty of getting a hundred percent, which is thirty-three. Uh, it's much more difficult with a hundred and sixty-four or whatever's uh in there on Beverly Hills. And uh, there's very few percentage that wanted privatization. So we had no options as far as gates. Now it leaves us with the ordinance. The only tool available to us, uh council passed it, are, it is up to our police to enforce it. As mayor, I cannot tell a police officer, when you pull somebody over, give them a ticket. Don't give them a ticket. What to give them a ticket for? Can't do that. It's abuse of power. Neither can council. Uh, we have to uh entrust our police officers to get, use their best judgment as they are out there uh patrolling the roads and it is in their hands. I get more calls than any other topic for our people of Beverly Hills that insist we're not pulling anybody over. Out of just thirty-three people of which, there's, I don't know, fifteen people here and a good portion of you have been pulled over. I think you can attest to the people of Beverly Hills that we are in fact pulling people over. And uh, and still, uh, the traffic is a massive problem. This is where we're at. According to the law, we cannot make exceptions. That's discrimination. We can't give uh stickers for your trucks as much as I would love to. There's not a single person in the entire city of Halotus that wouldn't want to embrace the people of Halpenny due to your long years of proximity and using there. We want to. We look for every possible way, every, there isn't any. The reason being is because it's flat-out discrimination. Plus, if we gave you stickers and wouldn't work because they would take picture of it, they would produce them all and they put them on all their cars and in Davis Ranch and they would track through. Uh, they've already uh made their own Uber signs because there are exceptions uh to the rule. Uber, uh taxi, uh police officers, school buses. So for the questions about what about the children, school buses are exempt from uh because that's a category of public transportation along with uh delivery trucks and uh post office, these type of things. Um, the only way unfortunately for Halpenny to be able to be exempt from the pass-through ordinance is if Halpenny was to become annexed into the city of Halotus. Something that we, despite the cost that would be associated with uh annexing uh your road and the care is something that I would certainly support and I believe would uh garner a significant amount of support. And we can talk about that as, as one aspect of it, but that would require the people of Halpenny taking a vote in your homeowners association and making an application to the city. Again, just requires fifty-one percent uh to uh of your population to bring it as an application. Uh, we have presented uh all the requirements for annexation and all the requirements for privatization uh to people in your neighborhood. I've been told on multiple occasions, the polite way would be that, no, you're not interested at all in becoming annexed into Lotus. Uh, I certainly understand that. There are plenty of ways of which we can work with developer agreements with annexing your land, grandfathering certain uh conditions of uh property, et cetera. There, there are a number of things we can look at if you're concerned about uh the type of property you have and what you have on your property. These are things that can be looked at in the application process, but we have to have an application to even uh start that process. Because of the legality of it, there is, despite how much I want to, I'd slam my gavel right now and give exemption to every single person. I'll pay, it's not legal for us to do that. It would be the same as saying, anybody lives on the right side of the road, okay, anybody on the left side of the road, not okay. Or if you're six foot tall, you can, or if you're four foot tall, you can't. Discrimination, color, race, where you live, except for the fact that if are you in the city or are you not in the city? And unfortunately, due to what we have, and I just read you the numbers from one day. Let me give you also a report just in that same week. Just on Beverly Hills, hundred and one uh cars we pulled over in one week, all right? Hundred and one. And you saw the speeding, you saw the, the number of people, and that's just what police we can spare. It's three percent of the city. So it's a problem and we have to deal with it as a city. And unfortunately, and I, I'm telling you, it grieves me of how it impacts the people of Halpenny. But there's no other option we have at this time. Uh, the closest option we have is on the horizon is the connection of a secondary road that will be built by the sagebrush uh in their phase three that will cut through Dave, from Davis Ranch through Bryce Wood and connect and come out to fifteen sixty, a little further towards Claver Road. I believe once that is connected, that will alleviate a huge amount of traffic. At that time, if that does solve it, we can bring it up for city council to reconsider if we lift that or uh, that's something that can be looked at at a future, at a future time. Those are the facts of the situation we have to deal with. Those are the facts of what the law states and what we can, as much as we want to give exception or grandfather, uh what a lot of people in Halpenny refer to and they're laying on to what's called um uh implied egress. And there's a second type of egress is closely related called two types of egress. One was uh implied and one was uh, either way, they're both basically tomato, tomato.
The prescriptive.
Prescriptive egress and neither one of those can be applied to uh municipality. Uh, once that road was cut through, it does provide another way to access it. And so we have to take a look at the municipalities. This is a truly unfortunate situation of which I do not uh take joy or pride in at all, except for the fact that this is the only way that we can have any measure to be able to help protect our citizens in uh Beverly Hills.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, if, if they do request annexation and, and the city council does vote for it, can we put a gate up?
No, we still.
Still can't put a gate up.
What we can do is move the ordinance sign to the backside of Halpenny and put it here and just do that one section of road. And now in order to give the no pass-through ordinance tickets to Davis Ranch, we only have to track them from here through Halpenny and give them the ticket there as opposed to all the way through to fifteen sixty. It makes it much easier to be able to patrol for that and it would exempt all the Halpenny people. So there not only that, but you would get the benefits of our police coverage, which would be roughly three or four minute response versus Bear County sheriffs, which forty-five to an hour or, or no response whatsoever. Forty-five to an hour or or no response whatsoever. So all the people that I've heard the complaints, people coming in, loitering, dropping garbage. You would get our police response, we get our fire response, our EMS response, which are minutes versus. Longer than minutes response by Bear County. Uh and our dis- uh you still probably get our dispatch because that goes off of cell phone tower proximity, but uh. Uh these are the things and I I submit it to you to consider. We are always open. We're having a conversation. I've had dozens of conversations with helping people and 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 hundreds of conversations with Beverly Hills, and we'll continue to have this conversation and leave that door open. Uh because we do appreciate you as part of our community. We do appreciate you as as our neighbors, but there are legal. Issues that prevent us from doing exceptions. Are there any specific questions?
Ma- mayor, I do want to add that if there was a petition to be submitted. Cities are allowed to negotiate so that it could be zoned ag. It could uh grandfather. Uh cattle, horses, things like that on the property so that it's. It's basically non-comorbant use, but it's a use that would be allowed to continue.
In the same way that when we, this is really the point of people are looking at, why are we building this or zone this? The only time to affect the zoning is when you annex that land into a city. So. What are you saying? We if we don't have a zoning, this is a time where we could create a special zoning or a special district. So those concerns about the animals you're able to have exactly can we can be worked worked around. I I will entertain a question, one question.
I haven't seen anybody give any information about annexation from the city of others. So you've been working with. Probably one person in particular. And they really don't share these. They they speak for all of us. So.
The the and uh so anybody, if there's a good portion of people here and I would dare say maybe even a majority. Of help any uh get together. If there's a couple want to get together and have a uh meeting, we can meet with the city and uh we'll lay out everything. Most of that conversation was about privatization and until you had a hundred percent, there wasn't any conversation. Plus, that's a Bear County issue, not a city of Holotus issue. Uh I know Ken was one person I was talking with, but then again, that was part of the whole. There's uh Beverly Hills issue. Please reach out if uh if that's something you want to proceed or there's a group of you want to uh check on that information, call us up. We'll schedule a meeting and we'll give you all the information and even help in any way we can in the process. Uh but it would require the homeowners association. Uh as it is, to be able to take a vote amongst its people and be able to provide. Uh at least fifty-one percent in approval of annexation and we can get an application for you at that point and uh uh help walk you through that. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Um. Yeah, uh we. Uh okay, it would be you would be you would be subject to city taxes and go again, that which is uh fortunately lowered each of the last three years. Uh and is down to thirty-one cents per hundred dollars of valuation on Bear County. That would be the tax rate to whatever is on your tax bill. You could figure thirty-one cents per hundred. Uh so most taxes are about three dollars. So might be ten percent increase on your taxes. Roughly speaking. Unfortunately, we can't have conversation back and forth on with the here. Would have meetings and set up on there and. Answer all those questions. Uh and give you all the specific information so you can make an intelligent decision. Any specific questions or points of discussion from council? In that case, we'll close item number thirteen. We'll move to staff report item number fourteen presentation by Corey Volo. This will be on our MS four fiscal year.
Good evening. Uh I would like to thank everyone for their time. Mayor, city council, city administrator and city secretary. Uh tonight I'll be providing. Information from a PowerPoint presentation detailing some of the city's requirements for stormwater pollution prevention, commonly referred to as MS four. Uh MS four is an acronym for municipal separate storm sewer system. And um under federal state laws were enacted years ago, that requirement is values to apply for permits through the state. That allow the city to discharge stormwater into state waterways and ultim- ultimately waters of the United States. In our case, we apply for this permit through the TCQ Texas Commission of Environmental Quality. During the application process, we must provide TCQ with with a stormwater management plan that details what measures. We're gonna take to ensure compliance and prevent pollution and preventing pollution is the main objective. Uh this PowerPoint touches on those minimal control measures. Uh what they are and uh the best management practices we use to achieve them.
If I'm too ahead, just let me know.
No, that's fine. I just want to give that a little breakfast so that. There's clarity on what I'm about to talk about. Um so cities required to develop a stormwater management plan. That describes specific actions that will be taken over a five-year period. In an effort to reduce pollutants and protect the city's stormwater quality. This stormwater management plan. Also sets measurable goals and provides a schedule for the implementation of uh BMPs or best management practices over that course of five years. Uh BMPs must be developed for each of the five required minimal control measures. Um that's how TCQ gives us a gauge on what we need to do specifically um to be in compliance and to prevent pollution. Uh in our case, the five minimal control measures that TCQ selected for us is uh public education outreach and involvement. Illicit discharge detection and elimination. Construction site stormwater runoff control. Post-construction stormwater management. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. And we're going to detail. What some of the best management practices we use to reach and fulfill those uh minimal control measures are. These are just some examples. We have roughly twenty-four, I believe, best management practices that we that we buy by. And uh this is just gonna detail a few of them. Education of elected officials and the public, which we're doing right now. And uh I'm also sending out flyers and things of that nature to fulfill that best management practice. Um. We have a storm sewer system map that we have up in our our building for our guys to know about, but you can also get that online as well. And that's just details where all our stormwater um conveyances are. Construction site inspection and enforcement uh that goes with some of the inspections that I'm responsible for. And uh public works does. Sometimes code enforcement gives them gets involved with that, and that's something that we are continuously doing. Post-construction stormwater management is a continuation of the previous one, so um developments are required to ensure that. The pu- pollution prevention carries on beyond just the time of development. Disposal of collected storm sewer system waste. The way we use that is. We have uh an agreement with our solid waste provider. So when we do. Remove things from our stormwater sewer systems as a public works entity, we have a means of disposing of it properly. Uh this was a notice of application and uh MS four permitting from from the last cycle, and we're about to start that process again. There are going to be some changes for twenty twenty-four. Uh I believe there are going to be good changes. Um. To give a little insight, we we applied for the last permit in twenty nineteen and we just received the approval a few months ago. And so um. There's gonna be electronic applications now instead of mailing things in. And um they're supposed to be streamlining that process for us in the immediate future, so um. Beginning in twenty twenty-four should be a smoother process for everybody. Any questions?
Oh, no, sir. Okay, barring any questions. Thank you very much, Corey. Appreciate you for getting out here. And then finally, item number fifteen, well, presentation by Glenn Goolsbee for the HEDC's fourth quarterly. Activity, fourth quarter activity for fiscal year.
I thought everybody came out to hear me speak tonight, so it's kind of disappointing they all left.
Wrong again.
Man.
Out here to look at your beard.
Yeah, there. If you would like me to go through this, I can. Um.
A summary would be great.
Uh I can try to keep it brief. I know we've been here for quite a while, one of the longest meetings in several months. Uh so some of the, I think the the key things for the EDC in this last quarter, you know, we did create a community enhancement. Um committee, which I I know we're still trying to coordinate its first meeting. Uh but we've uh developed at least a plan to start uh more investment into the community parks that currently exist here. Uh the first project, in fact, uh that we funded is a new uh children's playground. Think of the age ranges, you know, two to ten uh here at municipal hall or or city hall. Uh some of the initiatives that we have for our businesses, uh tenant improvement grant. So far this year, we have uh funded five uh new businesses uh here in Halodus. Uh the only, well, there's two projects that are still uh pending. Uh twin brother burgers, uh which was uh planned to take over the Bobby Jays. Uh but I know when they came to apply to us, uh they let us know upfront that they didn't plan on starting construction until the first quarter of twenty-four. Um and the other one uh that's currently being reviewed is the uh Old Town Helotus Food Truck Park uh that's being built behind. Um shopped at Old Town Lotus where one one of ones located. We also have an e-commerce grant program trying to help some of our businesses uh not only get online, uh make sales online. And then uh also do some digital marketing. That program, I think, still uh is a little more education in the business community, but uh we've had some of the new ones uh take advantage. Uh the most recent is uh Playables, which opened off of a business parkway, and he actually took advantage of both programs that we offer, the tenant improvement. And the um the e-commerce grant. I know you you guys are familiar with the community arts grant program uh that we've established, uh which the second round, we've received approval. To do a major sculpture in the traffic circle in Old Town Halodus. Um that is under development. I don't anticipate us being able to actually have it installed till after August. Uh you know, it is a eight to twelve month process to build the uh uh the size sculpture um that we're getting. We also did approve funding uh to make improvements to the traffic circle. Uh to try to help uh secure the piece once it's installed and also uh beautify uh the traffic circle a little more than what it currently is. Uh that project was put on hold because of the Christmas parade and all the decorations in Old Town. Uh so we probably will not start that until January after the holidays. Uh one of the other programs that we've had going on since twenty fourteen is uh our Google three sixty business tours. So any business moving into Halodus. We help them kind of get listed on Google and provide uh professional photography of their business, their products. Uh as well as a a virtual business tour, so you can uh walk around uh their location. Uh this year, uh we were able to um. Add eighteen uh businesses to that list. Uh and so we funded it uh again for twenty twenty-four with another eight thousand and we should be able to help. Uh close to the same number of businesses uh. Uh during twenty twenty-four as well. Uh probably the biggest project that we're doing is our Halodus Visitor and Business Center. Uh which in the current space, we are kind of a strip center right in front of uh city hall. We're taking over twenty-five hundred square feet. Um we've had it uh designed by an architect. We went out for bid. Uh as as if some staff and uh the mayor know that the bids definitely came back higher than we anticipated. Uh so we've kind of value your value engineering that uh right now. Uh and it looks, it looks honestly promising that we're gonna get close to the budget number that we're looking at. We may have to come uh back before council for a small adjustment for a few change orders that were unanticipated. Uh partly with some facade improvements uh and then like HVAC uh work that needs to be expanded. And then on a marketing initiative, uh the EDC, knowing a lot of our businesses are being impacted by road construction with Bandera Road. Uh we've decided to uh try to help out, at least in a small way. Uh we're gonna be providing uh banners for vinyl banners, four by eight, five by ten. Uh for businesses that are directly impacted. We're also, though, combining a uh a digital marketing campaign behind it to help promote shopping local. Uh continue to support your local small businesses. Uh so we, you know, try to stay uh some of the closings that we've seen posted on uh. Social media. Um and then we're also gonna be looking at a a larger uh campaign of visit Halodus. Uh two for the this upcoming year for twenty twenty-four. If you have any questions? Feel free to ask.
I I do. So I I love that you're trying to help these businesses that have been hurt by by the construction. Just make sure that you're. Okay with the ordinances with signage and if you need to work that.
There, I mean, there is a.
There's a new sheriff in town.
It's outside our city limits, right? So.
So we've we've talked with staff and I think there's gonna be some. In a sense, variances uh that are granted. We do have to um. Kind of be careful on the quantity per uh center, you know, obviously if. One of the the centers over here, like with Babes uh Burgers, we can't have ten banners. Well, there's not enough frontage to fit ten banners. So we're gonna have to actually set them up. It's an application process, first come, first served. And then we're gonna have to actually go out there and help rotate. So there there's only gonna be spots for probably two to three banners at any given time. Um which is actually close to what the code is. It allows two on a strip center.
But movement is good. Trust me, I know from campaign signs.
Right.
When they're there too long, people don't look at them anymore. So I don't feel a lot of work, but.
It is, but we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Any other comments? With that. Uh shout out to my son and the youth showing up, taking an interest in local government, of course. The ever lovely First Lady of Halodus, my wife. We are adjourned. The time is now nine twenty-seven.
He left. No. Seemed like that.